Welcome to the regular meeting of the Champs de Chandory, September 17, 2024. And item number one I just did, opening of the meeting. We'll go to item number two, adoption of the agenda. I would need a resolution to adopt the agenda as presented. And we need some... Mr. Mayor, I would move the adoption of the agenda, moved by Councilor Richard, seconded by... Mr. Mayor, I would second the motion. Seconded by Councilor Combi. All in favor saying five, saying aye. Against me, motion carried. Item three. A conflict of interest, declarations. I would like to know if anyone would have to declare a conflict of interest on one of the items mentioned on the agenda. I will be on conflicted two items, 7D and 7H. So, at the time when we dispose this item, I will get out of... I will excuse myself. Anyone else who would have a conflict of interest on any items on the agenda? If not, we'll go to item number four, adoption of the minutes. June 18, 2024 should have received the comment. And we need a resolution to adopt the minutes. I move like to adopt the minutes of June 18, moved by Councilor Babino, seconded by Councilor Richard. All in favor, saying five, saying aye. Against, no motion carried. 4B. The minutes of the meeting held on June 25, 2024. I move it. That we adopt the agenda, reserve of modification at the future date. There's a motion on the table. Do I have anyone to second? I will second, Mr. Mayor, seconded by Councilor Bastarache. Mr. Mayor. So, would have to review like the content of the minutes. And it can still be posted for the citizens. And we can adopt, we can still adopt it and then make the modification later. We'll go to the question. All in favor, saying five, saying aye. Against me, motion carried. Item 4C. The minutes of July 16, 2024, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption on the reserve of modification, moved by Councilor Babino. Seconded by Councilor Richard. Ready for the question? All in favor, saying five, saying aye. Against, like the minutes of August 20, I move like the adoption on reserve of modification at a later date. Moved by Councilor Babino, seconded by... I second this motion. Seconded by Councilor Combi. All in favor, saying five, saying aye. Against me, motion carried. Five business arising from the minutes. So, we have five business arising from the minutes. From the minute. Of the previous thing. But I knew there were some, like for Châtelet-Roux. Like the partnership agreement, like the twinning agreement. Do we have any update on that one? So, I don't know if the... Yes, following the meeting, the chair contacted me to see what the council decided. It was informed like there was a motion, but finally like it was defeated. So, I informed this and I think like a few days after or maybe a week after, we got a letter, like resignation letter from the president. And since then, no other, no meeting or communication like from the twinning committee. Thank you. So, we are aware like... So, there was an agreement that was signed a while back. And it were... So, unless like they were not notified. So, did... So, we had no communication like from either like from Châtelet-Roux or the twinning committees. So, we don't know if it was done or not. So, it's September 19 was supposed to sign. It's in two days, so might have to notify like... Because it would be renewed automatically, right? Maybe I can answer like usually. It was like a friendly agreement and I think the dates could be decided by the council, maybe to just release them. If it's not signed, it's not signed, but but we have no direction from the council like to sign the, to sign agreements. I did not talk about signing the agreement, but like a resolution was quite clear, like we decided at the time not to renew the specific agreement, doesn't mean like that we would not discuss like... But not this one. So, that's why, that's what I understood. And I was just wondering if there are any formal or informal discussion like from the people from Châtelet-Roux? No, not on the twinning matter. So, no, no meeting like of the twinning committee to do is too automatically? So, this agreement will not be renewed automatically? No? But we have no direction like to sign, so nothing will be... Nothing will be signed on this document. Just to be clear, like everything was coming, like we did not sign it. Automatically, it was renewed. But... So, it was renewed like at this time of year, unless we say otherwise. I think it was, do you have the agreement in front of you? I don't have the copy here, but I was looking from the resolution from the council, like if I remember. There were no direction from the council, like the resolution was defeated, so no decision was made on this file. Even, I could even add, like the former village of Saint-Antoine does not exist and now it's the town of Chandory, so... So, they would be, would not be able to sign like the agreement with the former village of Saint-Antoine. It's a new like, we, new way of doing things, like with the new municipality of Chandory, with the Châtelet-Roux. If it's the wish of the council like to continue, I don't think I understand like... I thought we were bound by those previous agreement for the former village of Saint-Antoine. So, we're not, not all of them. Yes, it's a decision of the council. So, if you want to continue, then we could... The document, it was, the agreement was done with the former village of Saint-Antoine. That was a sound of Chandory, so we need a resolution that the town of Chandory wants to continue this commitment. Is to be clear, like the agreement that existed with Châtelet-Roux. Now, it's, it's not, it's void? If that's what you want to say, it's there, like it's up in the air. I cannot see like it was void or not. It's a municipal council, like it was the former village of Saint-Antoine. I'm looking some from clarity like to that this agreement will not be renewed automatically. And I would like to have, might need to have a discussion. A resolution like to, I would open like to anything, but I think the twinning with the village of Saint-Antoine and and Châtelet-Roux, it was an agreement. That's temporary, it was very important, like for the former village of Saint-Antoine. The village of Saint-Antoine was a twin with the town of Châtelet-Roux. The village of Saint-Antoine was dissolved. Now, it's because now we say like Saint-Antoine will not be operate under the village of Saint-Antoine. And now it will be the town of Chandory, so all the documents that and a lot of the document of the village of Saint-Antoine and town of Chandory has to adopt through resolution. Our CAO might be able to develop on this matter, but maybe that's a winner, but it would be a new agreement and that should be done if it's the desire of the municipal council to continue twinning with a town from France. It's a decision made, this decision has to be made by the council. I don't know if it answers like the question. And I think a twinning, it has to be, it has to be done like by a committee. Like with the former twinning of the Kent Cultural Centre who started this a while back and I don't know if it's if the town of Chandory is still interested. The agreement that is there is... Any question? Mr. Mayor, so the last time we discussed it, we said clearly like that we see like to be a friendship with Châtelet-Roux. It's nothing new like in this discussion. And I knew there was a document, it was like 40 years old. But this document is not valuable for us, because automatically like we would need a document that would, that would give all the details what we're getting into. Because right now, the document is talking about economic aspect and its other aspect, other than just friendship between Châtelet-Roux and and to invite the people from France to visit us like. So, we're doing a great work, but to renew something, we're not, we don't know what it entails. Well, I don't think it's a good idea. If I could make a suggestion. There's a committee of a community life, maybe one of those committees could look at this file more in depth and it has to be a discuss like for the town of Chandory. I have no idea if the council wants to continue like to pursue an agreement with the town of Châtelet-Roux. I know you're interested, like you want to do things, but... So, Councilor Combi, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's quite obvious that 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 the resolution does not seem to be clear for many, for many councillors. Yes, we're, 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 we know like it's, it's an agreement with Châtelet-Roux and it was renewed automatically. And if there was another agreement, if you would be interested or not with condition. So, there's all like this, this aspect. I understood like the agreement as it standard. Doesn't mean that we're interested. And now he said, "No, I don't think so." Wasn't it? Could we have a discussion with the committee? They should have like a meeting sometime in September, maybe to discuss this matter. Would it be possible like to review the agreement to satisfy the interest of the town of Chandory? If it's the case, it should go through a committee, a current committee, existing committee, the committee life or... So, this is my, my opinion. Just to clarify like and I read the minutes and it's the June 18 minutes and no decision was taken by the twinning committee. The motion was defeated, so no official decision was taken by the, no direction. It's just to clarify like there were some motions made, but, but they were defeated. Councilor Bastarache. The reason I to take a decision, we asked like to clarify this. I don't remember like Tina. I think it was part of, it was a major point, like we said, like we did not want to do what what would be the budget for this agreement, but we wanted to know like where the money was going. So, that's why we did not take a decision. Maybe it stayed there since then. Yes, so I contacted them like after like the last meeting. Not the one who made the motion, but the previous one with all your question, but what the answer was received. And after the meeting, the council, the council took a decision. The motion that was made was defeated, that's where we had the municipality and we didn't have any other meeting like before like the arrival of the people from Châtelet-Roux, a few days after. Like the president resigned from the committee and no one organized anything like what it was supposed to with the 2,500. I don't think it happened unless like the town of Bautouche got involved into something. But to my knowledge, nothing was done by the twinning committee, so so you were asked to clarify the budget, because what you wanted to know. We had asked like before the meeting, but we did not receive. But he resigned a few days after the last meeting. If I may also add, Councilor Maier. Mr. Mayor. As I said, like I did last discussion or last meeting. It was the June meeting. I still see like the benefits like to have to have a friendship agreement like with Châtelet-Roux. It's not only Chandory. It has to be more regional, like maybe Grand Bautouche could get involved. And maybe Bosa, they also had other projects. Might be a way to do something in combination with them, because I'm under the impression like it's the same relationships as we have and Bautouche. It exists, as you know, so I saw this and I still... Doesn't seem to have like a lot of leadership in this initiatives and I think we need some leadership. We need to at least to have one discussion. Maybe to invite Grand Bautouche and Bosa to discuss this. And, and also like to to have like a committee, maybe like community life or economic development, as Councilor just mentioned. And then they should have a report, so it should be presented to the council to see. Because the discussion we're having now, it's okay, but, but we do not have the fall in front of us. Thank you very much. Councilor Babino. Just for clarification. So, there were no interaction with the CAO and the people from the committee? Yes, the people from Châtelet-Roux like were invited by the Southeast Regional Service Commission and they were and I, and I attended my own expenses and the town of Châtelet-Roux also. And they came here to visit me. Think we did a visit, but it was like a friendly visit. No discussion about the twinning. Not when they came in. So, Councilor Richard. I would like to add. I'm not familiar with the pact, but maybe should, I think it should be reviewed too. So, yes. So, just to give it like to the economic development. So, we can, so to check, review the agreements. So, we need a resolution, maybe like to try to give this file to committee, to the extent of the council. And Councilor Maier, it's important to reflect that it has to become a file for the council if they want to continue. It has to be, there has to be a resolution. How those directions can be, I'm, I'm okay with all the direction you'll give me. And maybe you can just review the file, let's say, also. Councilor Dijah. Mr. Dijah would like to get this document if you, if you agree. I think the Councilor Share is coming with the only copy we have. That was not an item on the agenda there. We're talking about the business arising from the minutes and the discussion, but if we can talk a resolution, I don't think it's the time or place to do so. I just want to make a point of order here. A point of order to explain. To Councilor Combi. Item five, is business arising from the minutes? And the minutes from there is the item for Châtelet-Roux, so that's where we do it, if we want like if not like it would not fit anywhere else in the agenda. So, in my opinion, it would be, would be the time to make a resolution. Because it's business arising from the minutes, that's why I'm bringing this here. If you, I agree with the CAO, but the resolution from May down June 18 gave no direction other than say like we decided not to sign the agreement, but but to reflect like the comments of made by Councilor Maier. I support like a Councilor Vias comment like so we were not there to take over and we do not sit on that committee, so we did not did not initiated like this to this matter like so the next meeting. It was this evening, we did not have any meetings this summer, so that's why it's a discussion. As Mr. Mayor said, we have a resolution. We have no resolution. We could go to the next item. Mr. Mayor. The document is here. Article six. It's the document. Article six like is the actual convention. For, it was done for three years, three, except the interpreter does not have the document. So, except like if the, one of the two parties designed to terminate the agreement. So, I think if I look at the data. I think it was September 19 was the deadline. So, yes, September 9 and I think and I think it's there to rely on the agreement, like we could communicate, either make a resolution and just show our interest to for the agreement then. And to do it officially, it's still like an agreement. It's very clear for us, so that's, that's the clarity we were looking for. So, the agreement was signed with Saint-Antoine, so I don't know. So, we would have signed that document for Saint-Antoine, from the former village of Saint-Antoine. So, I don't know if it was done by the local government, so so the act on local governance like during the transition process like they. So, all the agreements from the village of Saint-Antoine at the council level, like I would have to check, but I think it was the case. It's a decision, if you, if you want me to sign it, I can. Maybe you should go through like the files and I find this document quite important, but I think we should give ourselves like the chance to to discuss it, like to maybe a plenary meeting and I know like the document is there and the communication could do it by Chandory and if it's the wish of the council, I have no problem with this. The town of Châtelet-Roux, I wanted to ask. Respectfully, yes. So, we need a resolution. If the council wants to proceed, if not, well, we'll go to the next item. Mr. Mayor. So, I move like the date of September 19. That we do not approve like the renewal. That we do not renew like the, this document. That we encourage like the interactions with the Chandory and with more developed discussion and to add a little bit of precision to the document. In order to to eliminate the automatic aspect, so the automatic renewal, just to stop the automatic, automatic renewal. A motion from Councilor Dijah, anyone to second it? I second, seconded by Councilor Babino. All in favor, saying five, saying aye. Against me, motion carried. Now, we'll go to the next item. If there are other business arising from, from the minutes. We'll go to item six, but presentation from the public, I think there are none this evening. Item seven, correspondence. 7A like Department of Transportation Infrastructure, so I would ask Tino Becom to develop on this subject. It's a letter like that came from the Department of Transportation Infrastructure to inform like the request we received like for the partnership from provincial municipal role for 2026 was accepted. So, there was a request like 1,041,000 like for the wastewater suing like 0.31 kilometers for, to the curve and and it's good, these are good news like that we got the approval, so this project will be done in 2026. Any question, comments? If not, logo 7B, New Brunswick Association Fire Chief Associations, I will ask our CAO to if she could develop on this item. So, this is a letter we received from the New Brunswick Fire Chief Association following a meeting they had and it was to ask to the municipal council throughout the province to to involve like the fire chief and also the fire marshal like to discuss the fire department. So, they were talking also of the reform and the changes it brought, so it's is to encourage like the councils to work with the fire chief. Any comments or questions? Councilor Maier. In situation like this one with I assume like we should give a direction or a follow-up, but if not so it's as if there's no action. Maybe I can answer this one, but the fire chief like they invite to, they sit on the public safety committee and and they get involved in the files and we will mention, we will certainly mention that that letter to them. It would be good like for the public safety committee to address this, so we have a good relationship with them. It's, it's, it's good like with... With the two fire departments and with the chief and they're always invited. Sometimes they attend, sometimes they don't. But they're always invited to the public safety committee. So would. Shouldn't we have a resolution that would say that we're asking like the, the public safety committee? To come with, with an action or a follow up? Or, or is it just up in the air? Like, we could. Make a resolution like that would save the fire chief. If someone wants to make a resolution. Because it seems to be natural to do so. If not, it's for information without any follow up. And sometimes it shouldn't be the case. So I'm making a resolution that this letter be referred to, to the public safety committee. And also to come up with a recommendation. On actions to take on this one. Maybe a budget also. And then it should be brought back to the council for a decision. It's moved by Councilor Maier, seconded by. Councilor Babino. Ready for the question? All in favor saying aye, against nay, motion carried. Item. Seven C, speed limits. I will ask our C O like to explain. It's a letter like that came from two citizens on Murray Road. And it says to tell the municipality like with the speed limit and they're talking also about. Like crosswalks and, so some studies were done like on those. On this file, but the administration recommends. That this letter be, be sent to the municipal operations committee. So I would take a resolution. To see if it's what the, if it's the, the wish of the council with this file. And you, if you are ready to take a decision. Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment to this one, for the speed limit on Murray Road. Like we put a radar like on Murray Road like for the speed limit. And it was sent like to the R C M P. And then like. If they want to, they do a blitz or also depending. Of, of the resource available, but the R C M P like they are aware, there is a problem, there is a, a speed limit problems. And they will have a radar like to, to have at least some awareness and so people know like. I was along, I was, I resided on Murray Road for, for a long time and I'm aware like it's a problem like. And, and also. I will read the resolution like this. That is be treated by the municipal council, move by Councilor Richard. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Maier. Or Councilor, not Councilor Maier. I just wanted to second like the, the resolution. Seconded by Councilor Maier. Ready for the question? All in favor saying aye, against nay, motion carried. Sorry, I just saw your hand. And Mr. Mayor, I had a question on the same matter. So we have two radars? So in the event, maybe we could, could we purchase like one or two one and share with. I'd be to consider because. The radar seems to have a, a good impact and also and this information that is, that we can use. Councilor Comnier. So. As a counselor like. On the Clement Street, it's the same problem. And I was wondering like if we could not install like a radar there. So I told the person that referred the, the file, but. To the C O also for. It could be an item that we could, we could add to the public safety committee. So if they want to, to purchase, Councilor Maier. Mr. Mayor, you're like talking about radar for speed. But there seems to be like a, a, a demand like for, for a lot of places in Chandory, so I made a request. To the municipal, the director of municipal operation like for Saint Marie over the last. A couple of weeks, so the, the speed was high and on an older road and I. And they're paving it, so, and I think the, it, the situation will get worse. I think it would be important like to. To get this information. Any other, any more questions or comments? I will go to item seven B, and I think if the municipal council agrees that. We could readjust the order because I have to, I have to get out for the, for item H. So I think if you would just move it, if the council is okay like. Made a motion just to move it to. Over Councilor Babino, seconded by Councilor Richard. All in favor saying aye, against nay, motion carried. Seven D, the Homère Léger Public Library Commission. We, we have, we're, we're adding two new members, Patrick Richard and Melania Sono for also a three, both of them three year term. So we need a resolution. For each of those new members. So we need a separate resolution for each one of them or. Mr. Mayor, I will read for the Homère Public, that the municipality of Chandory accept. Patrick Richard for a three year term on the Homère Léger Public Library Commission. Move by Councilor Richard, seconded by. I second, Mr. Mayor, seconded by Councilor Comnier. Any questions on the motion? All in favor saying aye, against nay, motion carried. We need a resolution. I will read that the municipal, Homère Léger Public Library Commission, that the municipality of Chandory. Accept Melania Sono for a three year term on the Homère Léger Public Library Commission. Move by Councilor Richard, seconded by. Count, count, seconded by Councilor Dijah. Questions on the motion? All in favor saying aye, against nay, motion carried. Now we go to item. I would have a question. So there were no like. I had a question like for the. The mo- the motion of the board, or I don't know like. How many members did they have on their board? I would have to ask the representative, I don't know if he knows the answer. He's a municipal representative. I'm also part of the committee, so the entry. Seven, you're saying? Seven, plus you? Seven plus the director. So that was a preamble to my question. So. So the representative like. The territory of Chandory like. How is it spread out? Please turn off your mic. I would like to know. Are there any? Elsewhere and. They're, they're looking for members elsewhere, but. And not only members from Saint Antoine, but. And they are still looking for members like for the town of Chandory. For clarification are there? Do you think any other position will open? Because she has a hard time like getting a, a member. So if we have a little bit more people, it might be easy, easier like to, to hold meetings. So the motion seems to be quite. Seems to be quite loose. Can you repeat this? So there are seven, I thought, and with the two nominations, so. We would come to the same. It's just like. Just to have an effort to be made and. To get the people from various parts of Chandory. Because we pay for this one. And we can contribute to the great work. And the orientation also of the, of the, of the, of the library, so. So that the recruit will bring this. This, this message back to the committee. Thank you. Councilor Bastarache, it might be a good idea. For Chandory, like we could put. That maybe an ad and say we're, we're looking for more members like. To, to get members like for the, which point, I don't think we, we, we need a resolution. So the person, the responsible of Chandory. Councilor Comnier. Maybe I might be blind. For a resolution. And Mr. Maier. Thank you. And if other comments, we'll go to. We go to seven H. It's a letter coming from the Violence Prevention Center to inform the council that they withdraw their, the request that was made for the gala. And it's just to notify that the gala. Will be relocated, relocated in another municipality. Thank you. I think we have a, a resolution that's coming up later this evening, or no, no other comments? Mr. Mayor, we will ask him to come back into the room. Councilor Dijah, I got the letter. And I sent an email like to the executive director to clarify a couple of things, and this is the, the answer. From the executive director and I think. I think in all of this, we learned a lesson. And it explained also the planning until the resolution is really important and there are many also moving parts in the request and. And now also like, we did not get the expected final result. So we're hoping like the communication. That. We're hoping that the communication, the future communication. Will be more, will be better. And I think this letter was. Where the council and the council member will have the, the, the chance, the opportunity to comment or specify. To bring this discussion to a term. To making the resolution, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that we write a letter. So clarification. So you would sign the letter like to a special committee or do you have a? Just to clarify. Mr. Mayor, I move like the C O like answered the letter. In consultation with the seven councillors. That we answered the letter for the Violence Provincial and Center in consultation with, with the councillor. Councilor Bastarache. Is this a resolution? I will second it. Make the comment. It's just that. So when it comes to the council table, we're under the impression. Like the administration like. Received like a request a week after. The Councilor Dijah that because we. They, they wait, it was last minute and. We're looking for a donation. So we have a process like for any donations, like it has to go to the finance committee. The motion made by Mr. Richard just to let, to inform the organization, like there was a, a process. And that we can give it to the committee and then they bring it back to the council. So. So there were like some misunderstanding and we. I made a motion like. So it doesn't, so not lose anything. The town of Chandory, so I attended the gala, it was really nice. Just to see how the communication. Between like the council mayors and all of us, it's important even with organization to work together. And for the town of Chandory. If we do not work like as a team, that's what's happening. People were not aware and. And the end of the date came back right to our face. I know it didn't look too good. Was it our fault? Well. Cannot blame anyone, but it's a lesson learned in the future. All the team like. If we want to continue. And then. See like what we did. So it's important like. For the future of Chandory and we, we lost a, a good, a great event like. This is my, my point and, and I'm hoping in the future we'll be able to work together. And so to have the right timing and everything is in place. Thank you very much. Any other? Because that subject will come back a few, a couple of times. So any other items? Ready for the question? All in favor saying aye, against nay, it's been carried. At least get Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Item seven E. Safety in trails. I will ask our C O, you know, but going to develop on this project. So we received. Two letters like concerning. Concerns in our trails, citizen like they're living close to the trails and they had problems. Either like the. A T Vs or unauthorized vehicles. It was discussed. At the meeting that it was referred to a public safety committee. And the committee had a meeting on the ten to discuss it. And I think there was a recommendation from the committee. To go with a public consultation. Yes, Mrs. Daisy? To go with a public consultation. Yes, Mrs. Daisy. The Public Safety Committee, we met on. On September ten to discuss this file, and this file is very important for the committee and we have. So we we studied this file and we came to consensus. To see like which direction we would take. We decided to make a recommendation to the council to to hold public consultation. I will read the resolution. Safety whereas the town of Chandory. For the whereas like municipal council adopted a resolution. At the special meeting held on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four for public safety. That this foul of the trail safety. Following the the three, whereas the Public Safety Committee. Met on September ten, twenty twenty four. It recommends to the council to organize public consultation. It is the result like public consultation. Be held in November to to hear the concerns of the citizen and find possible solution. On the trail safety in order. To to re- to review a bylaw. There's a resolution on the table. Seconded by councillor Nija. Any questions on the resolution? If not, we'll vote. All in favor saying five, saying aye. Against nay, motion carried. I would. A question. No, we did not choose a date yet. Thank you. Seven F, the the department. Department of Public Safety. So it's a letter that was coming from. For the public to safety on. On the. On the on the scan program and this and this was to inform the council or the municipality that. Of the type of activities. Illegal activities like that they're taking care of. So they were giving prostitution, sexual assaults, anything illegal, like illegal possession of. Guns, like illicit drugs and etcetera. It's just to notify like. Uh between April first and July first, twenty forty four hundred eighty six situation that was solved by by this program. It was like like an update. Uh the formation on the scan program. Any questions or comments? Councilor Comnier. If we look at the letter like of public safety. Uh Mr. Austin. The scan program, that's something that was mentioned, like we had a presentation. And we're as the population like to. To have a program. It seemed to be like an interest to know more about this program. It's a program that's doing well in the province, as you mentioned that. And it could be something. I would suggest like the Public Safety Committee look at the possibility to organize a meeting. And have a representative from the scan program and have a public meeting. So people were interested by the program. It could help with some situations. And to discuss programs more in detail. Any comments? I think there's something similar. So councillor Richard. And Mr. Comier will say. It was brought that we had a session like for the Public Safety Committee. And it's just like to coordinate the presentation with scan and ask them to do a presentation. A suggestion, maybe we could combine like the scan presentation. With the meeting of the with the the trails. And that's a good comment, sir. We'll go to item seven I. Administration of seven G. So we receive a letter that says. Of the protocol office to say that. That the uh photos from the King Charles were available, so we said like we will post it. We just received it like a couple of the few days ago, just to say like these are available and they recommend also like to post it on the. In in the municipal office. Any comments or? What is the price? We got it for free like. Is it because nobody wants it or? We will. We will, we will post it. We'll go to item seven seven I, Association of Municipal Administrators of New Brunswick. I will talk on this item. I would like to. To to mention like that our CEO. Was honored last week in Set Andrews with two certificate. That says like she she she's a she finished a level two certification of the. Of local government's management. And the province. So there's two documents to do like to register certification and last week she she got her certification. It took it took many several years to do, but it's an effort like for. And and also another certificate she received. A certificate, it's a certificate. This one was given. Different that Tina might be able to to develop on those certificates. Those certificates gives. The test like. That what she did with Invest in Moncton and the Association of. Uh with the Francophone municipalities. So last year she won in meetings and she got, she received those two certificates, so. I wanted to mention it to the council and the public, the effort that was put by our CEO. Any comments on this? I would have a comment. Congratulations to our CEO. And it needs some word, at some time and work. And efforts. To to get those certificates and. And I think it's good. Something as a councillor like. It's always positive when the our employees want to pursue like professional development. And we support this as much as possible and we think. I I'd rather see your picture than 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 the King Charles. Thank you for your comment. We'll go to item. Seven J. It's a water and sewer fees. It's concerning like the apartment building that's being like four, six, four, five, like Mickey's mail's a corner of Main Street, Principal Street. It's it's a request coming from the owners asking like the. That that the the water and sewer invoices be only be. Sent once the construct. Once the construction is completed. So when when they're ready to rent like their units. Councilor Comnier, thank you. This is here with. And not if it was a bylaw or a policy, but. Not if it was the old council like to. So what? So for the developers like they did not pay like until they they can rent their apartment units. Is it quite in line or? So once the. The permit to the first condition with. That's where we'll start to to invoice. So what I've seen like. They're they're waiting also. So once they start, we would not ask for the the to pay the fees before. So our bylaw right now says. It has to start like with that. I think it's the next second voicing period. Once a building is, uh, once they're connected to the system, there were a few cases we had to request, especially for apartment buildings take longer to build. And we would wait like and the other requests that were made, I think. To resolution like the for it will come so like it was only to say. I after you get to billing permits, you would charge them because it's difficult to control like when someone rents like the apartment. Is it like, do you need like for the apartment building to be full or? So we said at the end of the billing permit, like we get get a copy from the commission and we close the file and we can start invoicing. Just to clarify, it's always to the next billing period. If ever the construction paper permit ends. Beginning of September, so and the billing was on starts October first, well. You could wait in January, so it depends like if it's within the three months. Mr. Mayor. I agree like with the developer's request. So do we need a resolution? Yes. Because it goes like against like the the bylaw. It was done a few times. But no amendments were made to the bylaw, so it's so it's applied for everyone. It was case by case. The comment was inaudible. For now, that's what it's case by case. So we need to do readings. We need three readings for each bylaw. Water and sewer, so six total of six readings. So another developer could could arrive and. Is this something we'll be doing every time or once and for all and? I think it was done like for the two other buildings, the same PID number, but it's it's. I like that we said like maybe the council might be look into to say like to to have this bylaw check and make some modifications to it. But there were not enough time to bring the bylaw. But we should look at it and. And that's why like the request is brought for each file. It's a recommendation. For the CEO and individuals asked to to have something. So by by law, we need to have a resolution because we go against our against our bylaw. Councilor Mayer. Mr. Mayor, maybe just a comment. So the request was. Seemed to make sense. I do not like the idea like to to have a resolution like every time like we go against a bylaw. Let's work second to review the bylaw. So like the next cases. Uh can be a. Process before without going to this table. Yes, the bylaw will have to be put. We'll have to put it on the agenda for it to have it reviewed. Any other question? Because of the development. Because a few a few years ago, we did not have like a apartment building, so maybe. Might see two or three every year like. I think we should have a bylaw that applies. So we can modify it, so. And in the meanwhile, what do we do with this bylaw? So with the the request from this developer was asking. Probably like his units will might be ready in two months, so he wants to know. Do we want to to process this one? But just to clarify, like. The procure operations will. This apartment has been connected since mid-August. If there's no resolution of this file, it will be built next period in October, so that's why like the letter. They do not want to be built in October because the apartment is. It's not built, but they're already connected to the water and sewer system. It's just like. Let's say like. We vote in favor, so what can we do? And if it's not approved, let's say next week, it's just. It's like we did like. Resolution that could be once the construction will be completed. And once. The construct, the building permit ends that they can do it. So there there was a resolution to recommend it, but you can modify it if you wish, so. It's in your package. So this resolution has to be sent and then to vote, we have to vote on it. So we'll make the resolution. Water and sewer fees, that the water and sanitary sewer in both only be sent to the property on following confirmation from the Kent Regional Services Commission. That construction on the PID two, five, four, eight, eight, nine, five, eight. Has been property has been completed and that the development meets the commission's requirements. So you heard the resolution? Who by councillor Michel? All in favor saying five, saying aye. It's been adopted, so I completely agree like. That that the bylaw. Because there are many like they have to be adjusted. And so that that's one that could be. Included like the next agenda of the committee or the administration. We'll go to item. Eight, the mayor's report. Should I receive it? So. Any questions? On my report? If not, I have a proclamation. I have a proclamation to do. For the municipality week. Twenty twenty four Local Government Municipality Week Proclamation. Whereas the committee participation in local elections and voter turnout are important. And whereas community involvement in local government decision making is is essential to a healthy democratic system. And whereas community understanding of local government operations and the services it provides is a primary importance. To a meaningful participation at the local level. Now, therefore, Jean Pierre, I, Jean Pierre Richard, Mayor of Chandory. Do hereby proclaim the week of September sixteen to twenty to twenty twenty four as the municipality week. That would like to add today. I attended an activity that is already like in in. In place. I met with the students of the two schools. From a grade six, seven and eight, and I invited them like. To look. And to ask question as to what is a municipality. It's it's how it always warm my heart like to go there and talk with them. They have good questions and good comments. And it went well and I think. Joelle will put some things in place, like maybe the mayor for a day or if something will do again, so. And. And I think last year. We receive it, so. It was a good initiative like from the administration. Thank you very much for this one. Any other question? Any other question? If not, we'll go to item ten. Nine, sorry, Chief Administrative Officers' Report. Thank you. Should I receive a copy of my report? So if you have any questions? If not, we'll go to the committee reports. Item ten A, it's Administration, Finance and Resources Committee. So I would ask Counselor Babino to explain his report. Thank you. So the Committee for Administration, Finance and Human Resources, it's always a busy committee. So we had two meetings in September. It's a very busy month in September and it will and will probably be busy in in November with the budget that and what we have to do. And of course, we always have also like the the auditor said like it should be by the end of September for the ring and we we look also at clarification and additions and updates also for the three years forecast. It's a very important tools. Can not only do our decision with our financial statement for one year. We have to look three years in advance and yesterday we we change things because it's in constant evolution. So it's a pleasure to 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 share this. The budget twenty twenty-five is coming. We already have a date in November, but we'll have a meeting in October and for the twenty twenty-five budget. And we will also discuss of the purchase of the older rectory. And it's still also the the project for the old rectory. So yes, the playground. All the discussion like for the playground that we will do. We want to ensure what was a part of the of the playground will not be a loss for the municipality that were planned is to replace. What was everything that was on the list? On the former like a territory location and want to replace it with new also. It's something we already started. And the dog park is coming too. So and we're working on it. And also like we had a second meeting when we did. We look also at the committee policy. We have to update our committee policies. It was one that belonged to the former municipality of the that our twin policy one oh nine was managed like how you you did the committee and the other one was the policies number extending committee. So we have to combine the two and have some kind of clarity like on what are their responsibility and our responsibility, their needs and have it very clearly. We had good discussion last evening. And the staff should bring something like so we can work on it. Uh, well, at the financial level. Wait, so we went twenty twenty-four instead of nineteen ninety-four, it went reliability like we updated the document. It's probably the our old accounting system is probably one of the purchase more the more strategic purchase we made. And I think we will reach an efficiency for the work like and we have many also ongoing, so I will not spend too much time of on them. And also, once again, as as a subject that that comes out every time our meetings. The donation request and you see the results of our work what's coming. And the employee manual also that's being purchased. We we should we should be able like to present something to the council for consideration on this note. Mister Mayor, I would take any questions. Any questions on the report? We'll go to the Public Safety Committee. Counselor Stefan, thank you, Mister Mayor. I just I would like to welcome like people who are here in the in the room here and also those on Zoom. And I would like also to mention now, thank you, we'll work for the volunteer firefighters. They're doing great work in the community. And I would like to congratulate them on the on the way. For the for for the firefighters of the sample in the San Antonio Fire Department for July. They 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 went on two accident calls, one call and one car fire and and two, one alarm like for for a private residence and the sample firefighter did one resident of her people. And one fire for a total of eight for August. I do not, I did not get the numbers, the statistics yet. And then this committee also we're discussing on the public safety issues and we had a meeting on September tenth. And these are also like what we discuss in detail for for the emergency measures planned. We're still waiting for the agreement with the with the community agreement between communities and 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 we for the Public Safety Committee like we'll look at this agreement. And then we'll have like something for the emergency planning and we will start, we'll we'll bring it back to the council. And the new emergency measure plan will will be prepared for the town of Chandory. And the Chandory Alliance to add the discussion. Many individuals expressed their interest to establish some rules. And it will be up to us like organized meetings. And and to give them the information. So if you want to get involved like for the town of Chandory, do not hesitate like to for for this one here. We also discuss of for for the safety and trail safety. So we'll have a resolution to be. So we will plan a public consultation. And we will prepare a bylaw for to reach some kind of consensus. To to have some kind of regulation like for the the trails committee. So before I concluding my report, I would like to mention like Counselors Maye work like it's he's doing exemplary work and he's always the Public Safety Committee as a resident and and for the future project. Any questions on my report? Questions for on the Counselor Charles report? Just maybe a surprise to already already have a a person that might be interested like to have a group in the region of Alba Legia Road, au Saint-Antoine and what it was formerly called Chandory. We will install two signs and we're ready to modify them like it could take a while, but I'm very happy with the initiatives done. Thank you, Counselor Babino, for this information. Just a comment. So there's no date scheduled yet for the meetings though. Counselor Komnia. I'm happy to hear that that the residents of Chandory are interested and you see how we could help us, but we're able to put something in place. As Counselor Stefan said, like there's a there's a few people who express their interest. And we'll try like to put something in place. Thank you. If there are no other question, we'll go to item NC. Municipal Operations, Counselor Komnia. Thank you, Mister Komnia. Good evening, everyone. We're in the fall. So the summer is almost off. We had a hot summer. So those who like camping, I think it was a good season. Good evening, everyone. And I I I hope you had a nice summer. I think it's a good start for the fall, but some work has to be done. So that's where we at. So the last meeting of the Operations Committee was in September and the next one will be on October ninth. And in at each meeting, the Director of Operations gives us an update and also on on various files and and also we discussed on many subjects and we talked in implementation of the of the maintenance and repair of road repair like for for several years. And I think we might be able to have a draft of the operation director. So we could have some kind of a draft. And also we're working on the implementation for a five-year plan for improvements of essential services in the region here. So we're talking about sewer system and surface water. And I think we need at least a five-year plan because with the development being done, we have to ensure like all those services are in place to accommodate like the demand created. So we have we have to submit some kind of of a draft. Other than this was probably where like the old dump we change like the regulation and to control a bit what's being dumped there. Because a lot of things were dumped, so we're hoping the population will be able to to follow those rules. At the old dump. So there's also work being done on Deni Street. And we're hoping like we'll be able to get some quotes because the number is limited and and we had some discussion on the snow removal contract and the parking during winter and and we have the 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 recurrent, we started some discussion with the contractor. And to see like will it look like this? And a lot of questions are being asked. So we ask our director like so we get some questions. I would like to men to mention at the provincial municipal level. Our CEO will have an amount of one point two millions from works that will be done in twenty twenty-six. So so all of these things. So it will be done mostly on Main Street. And this money comes from the provincial government and so when it goes by, well, so yes, this concludes my report. Any questions? Any questions for Counselor Komnia on his report? On Municipal Operations Report? If not, we'll go to item ten B, which is Development and Committee Life. Counselor Maye. Mister Mayor. It's a pleasure like to to present the report of the activity report for the committee Development and Committee Life. We had we had one meeting last week. And we review with the many files. And some were delayed to the next meeting. So we had, it's been a while since we did not have any meetings for official meetings of the committee, but still some files such as housing that were under the committee. And in the working group. We're very busy, I think. And I think and as for the for the development of of policies and criteria for the implementation of the program and we there are still a few files like that need to specify like on affordability. Some criteria and and there are some details to specify. And that's where we at. And I think we we'll see how it unfolds to to make sure that that the developers can can go ahead and answer like the question and the request to the to the clients from here and elsewhere where we would like to to move to Chandory. It's it was one of the file like we discussed last week. As for the trails. We talk, we were talking about trail safety. To wanted to be part of the work like from the the Public Safety Committee. And also like there will be a meeting tomorrow evening at the committee level for for the trail development, either like for the ATV. And and there is some work being done and and there is still some work to be done. This file is just to follow up a resolution from the council like to have a bylaw. And there will be also some consultations and some work was done before like it's finalized. As for the this is more for development and there's also the community life aspect. We discuss also for for the model like the the senior friendly municipality and all of the work being done. So we did not have the meeting. We had one meeting last last evening. So things are moving well. There's a lot of to be done, but we made some progress like to identifying needs of the seniors I call over Chandory. So a lot of work was done. In Saint-Antoine, I think it was more like in around twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. When they established like the C, uh, Saint-Antoine, the senior friendly community, there was some work to be done. There was also a matter of finding the priorities like within this and develop an action plan or to react to it. We had a discussion. The Deputy Mayor was mentioning earlier like to ensure that we have the same infrastructure and services that we had before. And like for the dog park, so with a few ideas for locations. So we had a discussion. And there was some for other files and something else to discuss during the next meeting as a council. So so we got, the request was made to the council to have a nice surface in Saint-Marie. And there's still some work to be done. And to know like for for consultations and the work that was done up as of now with all organization, Golden Age Club and Recreation Councils to to see like the priorities like for each word. So these are the next file on the agenda for the the development, economic development and committee life. So Mister Mayor, if there are any questions? I will answer them gladly. And I will answer them. Thank you. Any questions or comments? More of a comments. Certainly, like all the committees like they're open. If you are here, you you heard the things. If you're interested of me to listen. And we invite you to to be part to to be part of a committee and to listen to to them, what's going on. Good comment. Thank you very much. And I would like to thank the council member to sit on the committee. I would like to thank also the administration for all the work they're doing with the councilors like to update the files and working on those files. Thank you. It's appreciated. So we'll go to item number eleven, motions and resolution. Eleven A, the bylaw number 2024-02, amending by law 2020-04, by law adopting the rural plan of the village of Saint-Antoine. I would ask our C A C O to develop on this one. So the first reading of this bylaw for the rezoning on Bella Street was done at the last meeting. Now, will be ready to do this second reading is in and the third reading by title if if we would like to vote on this one. So I would take a resolution. Someone to read the resolution. I will read the resolution. By law number 2024-02, amending by law 2020-04, by law adopting the the plan of the village of Saint-Antoine. I will proceed with the second reading in its entirety of by law 2024-02, amending by law 2020 dash zero four by law adopting the rural plan of the village of Saint-Antoine. You heard the the motion from Councilor Richard. Anyone to second? I second, Mr. Mayor. Seconded by Councilor Comnia. Ready for the question? All in favor saying five saying I, against me, motion carried. So I will read like the bylaw. It's not too long, so you shouldn't take too long. By law number 2024-02, by law amending by law 2020-04, by law adopting the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine. Under the authority vested in section 111 of the Committee Planning Act of Municipal Council of Chandore duly gathered adopts the following by law 2020-04 entitled by law adopting the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine is amended. In order to change your current zoning from residential one family R1 to residential residential one and two family R2, the purpose of this zoning is to allow the construction of one residential building with two housing units. The property PID 25180936 is located on Bella Street in Saint-Antoine. By law number 2020-04 entitled by law adopted the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine amended by deleting paragraph 1.3.1 of the said by law and replacing it with the following. For the purposes of this by law, the municipality is divided into zones as designated on the map attached as Schedule B here to entitle the zone at Saint-Antoine and dated February 2021 amended as indicated on Schedule B five included and part of this document. Next page is signature and then then you have like the Schedule B five, it shows like the property on like the concerned property. So I think that's all. So we need a resolution or master resolution that that the by law number 22 for amending by law 2020, by law adopting the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine. That we adopt the second reading in its entire entirety of by law 2024-02, amending by law 2020-04 for by law adopting the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine. Move by Councilor Richard, seconded by by Councilor Lechar. Ready for the question? All in favor saying five saying I, against me, motion carried. We'll go like to the third reading. Sir Mayor, like the the by law 2024-02 amending by law 2020-04, by law adopting the Plan Rural de Saint-Antoine. That we proceed with the third reading by title of by law 2024-02, amending by law 2020-04, by law adopting the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine. Move by Councilor Richard, seconded by Councilor Comnia. All in favor saying five saying I, against me, it's been carried. We'll go to item we need to. Mr. Mayor, we'll read it like the resolution. By law 2024-02 amending by law 2020-04, by law adopting the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine. That we adopt the third reading by title of by law 2024-02, amending by law 2020-04 for by law adopting the Plan Rural du Village de Saint-Antoine. Move by Councilor Richard, seconded by Councilor Comnia. Ready for the question? All in favor saying five saying I, against me, motion carried. We'll continue eleven B. The the we have the rezoning. But as like our director like to develop on this one. So following like the last meeting, a resolution was made to organize like an information session with the the councilors of work one. A few members had visioned the mayor and the engineering firm in following consultation with the the Regional Service Commission and legal advice. We had to go in in a camera. It's recommended to to work to the public hearing process because what's shown in the resolution is exactly what would be done during the public hearing. So if you wish to do so, like the public hearing doesn't have to be done like during the council meeting, you could decide like to have a public hearing during a special meeting with only one item where the developer would be invited, the engineers would be invited to and also the members of the commissions. And the questions could be asked. Any questions or comments on this matter? Councilor Babino. Councilor Comnia. Where we're talking about the thirty day like the for consultation? Well, the next step and to do this resolution and to proceed with public consultation on the public notice would be posted for a thirty period and then you would have a public hearing either during a regular or a special meeting of the council. Councilor Comnia. Mrs. CEO. So we've been like within, go to the commission like a file. So so it's not recommended like that we do the meeting right away, but we could do it like during the process. During article 111. So anytime it could be done exactly what we're asking for. And it would be a meeting with all the groups. And they would meet with the council and we would take a decision. And also this meeting would invite the developer and that could be done like during the process or it could be done during a special meeting. Within the after the thirty day period because the act that we have to post it for at least thirty days. So depending like it could be after the, it's not recommended to do it before. So then we can listen to the citizens. And then we have thirty days and and then we could organize so a meeting before the council can take a final decision. So there will be a public he hearing because it's part of the process. And once it's been posted for thirty days automatically, there will be a public hearing and all what you're asking for in your resolution can be could be part of the public hearing process. So the consultation process hasn't started yet. So this is the advice saying like to go with the public audience and then to do to 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 do the public notice and then go with the public hearing. So the public has to be informed. And throughout the process, I could. And then the the decision can take a final decision for the rezoning request. And the council can can stop the process and it's so they can stop after the first reading, second, it's never final until the 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 find the third reading has been completed, Councilor Babino. Mr. Mayor, I move that we do go in camera like to get the details on legal advice. We did not get them. And then we said we had legal advice, but we did not have it, so. I I would like to. You see what is I I I move that we go in camera. We have a motion to go in camera of the article sixty-eight. Seconded by Councilor Richard. All in favor saying five saying I, against me, motion carried. Thanks for waiting. So we will continue with the agenda. We are still on item eleven D, B. That will open the table for discussion. And if some resolution on this matter. I would take a resolutions. How you would like to start with this? Councilor Maye. I will read the resolution. Whereas the municipality receive a rezoning request for the for the land with the PID 25180795. So the change would be from residential single family to to multifamily unit R3, whereas the municipality of Chandore ask the the advice from the Kent Regional Service Commission on this rezoning request, whereas the decision of the meeting of the Planning and Review Committee of the Kent Regional Service Commission recommends the rezoning request, whereas like a public notice will be published under article 111 on the local planning ad. Given the citizen sixty days to consult the project, the by law and submit, present any objection in writing or in person is resolved that the municipal Chandore accept the redigent from the the pride committee of the Kent Regional Service Committee and continue like the rezoning process. The person that we're bearing like 251 80795 in order to allow like the construction of one one single family unit per unit. Move by Councilor Maye, seconded by Councilor Lechar. I second the resolution. So we'll go to the question period. All in favor saying five saying I? I could explain a little bit to Mr. Mayor. So just to be clear, like usually we gave thirty days, but in this case, to be very clear, like it comes to my, it will be sixty days. With sixty days, it gives us like enough time to proceed with and to do the proposal like that we had at the last meeting. If I understand well, correct me if I if I'm wrong. And also like with this resolution where we would do the consultation with the citizen. So we'll honor their the proposal, we'll give a voice to the citizens. And by sixty days, we'll have to give enough opportunities to the citizen to to consult the plans, to ask questions and to discuss among amongst them. And also to make up their mind like what this project means and also have a public hearing spec during a special meeting. It will be a special meeting, so we'll be able to. So this is if I I understand well. So the so the public hearing is that under the articles. So there would be a public hearing under the rezoning process as our CEO said said. The council will decide until until the end of the rezoning and there's still a long process to go through, but under the the act we have to follow the process. And it's okay, but after the public hearing, the council can say we'll not want go forward, but if it's a way to proceed, it's the same. We have to go through the process because this is the process. If I understand well, this motion, this summer gives a control to the council. You always had the control like it's on till like the end. So the council will decide what what we do. And it's ensure we give a voice like the appropriate voice to the citizen in a in a reasonable period of time. It was asked, we'll take the question at the end, but yeah, but the process is done, so so the act requires a municipal to do it legally. It's done for everyone, but the municipal council can. The municipal council makes the final decision of the process. It could be half maybe not even half halfway through, but under the Local Governance Act. We want to follow the process. We want to assure the citizen that that the municipal council like to instead of thirty days, it will be extended to sixty days. So we'll have some discussion and if after the discussion, well, it's done, that's it, but we still have to hold a public hearing. It's the same with the municipal council. So you saw like the three readings that we did. If you not do the proceed with the reading, there's no zoning. We'll go on to a question and I think again. You can ask a question just to reassure this. I will continue. Then we'll ask question when we go back, but so that's what we need. For the reason it was, it's only the municipal council. It will be posted just to avoid the thirty days gave the opportunity for people who want to last year like they said also for groundwater. It did not go go through. Can I ask question right now? You'll have the end of the public hearing. That's why we have a public audience. We'll go to, it's just one because I want to for you. There's a process to follow and I think we have to follow. Thank you very much, but certainly we'll follow the process. The municipal council will have a decision to take and I will go to the question period. All in favor, the resolution that was motion saying five saying I, against me, motion carried. We'll go to the question and then it might be more developed, but we can't, you can wait until the question period. Item ten C. The the partnership for for the municipal partnership. As you saw, like the the opening for requests has been opened for the Provincial Municipal Highway Partnership Program at the beginning of the meeting. We got the approval for the year 2026, like we're submitting the project for year 2026. For the provincial municipal highway partnership program at the beginning of the meeting, we got the approval for the year twenty twenty-six, like we're submitting the project for year twenty twenty-seven. Following a discussion or a review of the asset management with the municipal operation director identified some projects that could be, might be eligible and consulted, but that were engineered firmly, they prepared the some proposal of the eligible projects, and I think like the municipal operator director brought it there initially, there were three projects that would be presented. So they prepare like three quotes, but we noticed like the third quote. We only receive it today and the third quote included like the part of of the fund that was already approved, so we we would draw it like from the plan, would be only two proposals and. Two projects we would submit, the first one would be for. To replace like main. As sewer close to Murray Road, so it would be like a distance of a hundred and twenty meters. And it would be also some more paving and sidewalk as eh. That would be done, and also the second, second project, the the replace like the 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 main line of main street from from Digly Street until Chamaire No, and it concludes also part of the is sewer pipe also for the. Like the sewer. Like they're not eligible in the fund, so if it's approved, there would be like cost to the municipality for constructor, and there's always some in those cases because they do not cover the sidewalks and there are things they don't cover, so there's always additional costs. And in general, generally like they cover what's that, so we would submit like two requests, so the first one would be, the amount would be total to four hundred sixty thousand and we get four hundred twenty-six thousand from from this program like transportation, and the municipality would be thirty-four thousand twenty-seven. And the other projects would be a total of seven hundred and five thousand two hundred, the municipality would be a hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred fifty on this project, this is the part for sidewalks and. Sanitarious were so, so we was presented you you are planned and we got the data today. Work all afternoon to add, and finally, like we have a version to present and. And we had to remove like a section. Because it was just like duplication, any questions or comments on this one? I think this project is important for the municipality. Maybe just to clarify. So the request is due by December twenty-seven and we need a resolution from the council. That specify the plan for the municipality prepare. And what was proposed in the plan, so. So we we need this resolution before September twenty-seventh. Council of Combi, just a comment. If I understand well. Is some finance. We'll get some additional funding, we have the funds for this one. And these are all things to be considered, like, let's say for twenty twenty-six. We know we have it, so we'll be able to get the 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 balance of the housing accelerator fund and but the municipality needs to have those funds, if ever there's some fund, it's a budget available, I'm giving the example like a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per year, is this this a hundred and twelve thousand dollars could be used for projects, because these are priorities for asset management and. Depending on the projects approved, so last year presented to one and only one was approved, so. So it 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 could be the same, one of them might be approved, if they are approved, if they are approved, because we submitted several requests that were eh in the past and they were denied, so it's a grant request. It will be discussed to to the committee, so. For those three pipes that would be replaced. We want to. We'll see what's available and the problem for surface water. So what we want to do there? So we can more absorb what's coming from the. Where the 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 pond, where the water water is retained. And pass through, so when we, the pipes will. Because if you need like a a two ponds, like just to solve those problems, so it's when we, it's a it's a start. That the way, if the funds are available, well, why not? We have to get them because. But so I would say, yes, it's good. We we should get more money and. And because it's eh. It's paid by the government, so yes. Any other comments? I know we had the council mentioned it like. To apply like for those funds, so that's where we at. I would take a resolution for to adopt this plan. Yes, prepare our engineer, Mister Mayor. So the document, the five-year plan, that the document that the Chandory is five-year plan for the MHP program twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one be adopted. I second the motion, seconded by Councilor Richard. Ready for your question, Councilor Maye. I do not have all the information, we're talking about the projects for the next two years. But we're talking for twenty twenty-seven to twenty thirty-one, this is five years, so. Are there any planning work like? Or longer periods of time or? Are we submitting, presenting some ideas? For twenty-seven, thirty-one, so in the letter you received. It's something for twenty-seven, so if you see like. Takes the preparation of the program for twenty twenty, have to pro- with the five-year plan, so it's really like for twenty twenty-seven. So the five-year program, it's it's from twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven to to twenty thirty-one, so. So they're not asking, it's one year at a time, thank you. Any other questions? To help like to answer, Councilor Maye, as I mentioned, like during my committee report. We're looking at a five-year plan. For to give essential services in the future. And also for surface water. So we'll see what happened and. We're looking to have something before, yes. It seems far away, but. But we want to improve our five-year plan, then to specify. From which year, that's what we want to do and we'll see, get the funds and. Thank you. We'll go to question, all in favor saying five by saying aye. Against name, motion carried. We'll go to eleven. The Monday, rail safety week. So this is a request we received from SEAN to recognize like the their rail safety week, so the reason is brought be brought as a resolution. As a proclamation is because there should be a resolution, because usually it's only the mayors attending the meeting and as a resolution, so it would be from eh to from September twenty-three, twenty-third to twenty-ninth, I want to promote like the rail safety. Yes, that's it. Questions? I will read the motion. Rail safety week. Or switch to English?
For two twenty-nine railway crossing and trespassing incident occurs in Canada in two thousand and three, resulting in sixty-six avoidable fatalities and thirty-nine habitable serious injuries. Whereas educating and informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railways right of way on private property, enhancing public awareness of the danger associated with highway rail rate crossing, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railway and obeying established traffic laws. Overdue to number of avoidable fatalities and injury caused by incident involving train and citizen and whereas Operation Lifesaver is a public slash private partnership. Who is who is aimed is to work with the public, rail industries, government, policy services, media and other to raise rail safety awareness, whereas SEAN and Operating Lifesaver have requested city council adopt a resolution in support of its ongoing effort to raise awareness. Save lives and prevents injuries in the community, including our municipality, is there is it is hereby resolved that the town of Chandory should support National Rail Rail Safety Week to be held from September twenty-nine, twenty-third to twenty-nine, two thousand and four.
Heard the resolution, who Councilor Bastarache and went to second, I second. Seconded by Councilor Richard. Ready for the question, all in favor saying five saying aye, against name, motion carried. It's one of the main reasons, probably like. We have a train track like in the territory of Chandory. And we take this very seriously, next item, it's eleven E. It was brought like a provincial elections. And we knew there will be a provincial election in October, the last meeting, the council looked into eh some recommendations and so will open like a table to to see if there are anything they would like to see. With the with this, because we could not make a resolution at the primary meeting, but you had the opportunity as a counselor to to give your opinion, a resolution, I'm Councilor Bastarache. Anyone who would like to start the discussion, Mister Mayor, I will make the resolution, I moved at the town of Chandory. Proceed to the organization of a forum with our candidates. I do not want to use debate because the municipality also. They encourage us like to use forum, forum and debate, it's a it's a similar, but the forum may be held at a date we will eh determine here in the municipality of Chandory. You have a second, or I second. Seconded by Councilor Maye. We'll go to the question for the resolution. Eh Councilor Maye made really good suggestion at the last meeting. And to see like to get ready. To see like that we get the we we send an invitation. On the subject that would like to be touched here. And we know it will, it will not be a big surprise. And we do not want to. Unless we 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 collect the the information and question from the public. And to create like this eh, the climate for the evening. It could be done like this and. And I think like eh the way like the evening will go. It could it could be maybe reviewed by the council, because we do. Councilor Combi, any comments? And also like eh we had maybe five, six important points, like we would like the like the provincial, even like the provincial leaders would consider for the town of Chandory. It would be either done at the forum. Eh it's it's or it's done by eh eh council meeting, so we can express those very important point. So I'm suggesting, and also the municipal council could. Could check those questions, so maybe we. Eh I would like to make an amendment to the motion, I would like to make the motion that that this forum has been done before. I did not get what he said, like the. This is my motion, so you heard the amendment? Seconded by Councilor Richard. Eh question of the resolution. So if. All in favor saying five saying aye, against name, motion carried. We'll go to the resolution for. The the resolution. I need someone to second it. Oh eh the resolution was already seconded, so it. I don't remember who seconded. Councilor Maurice. We go to the next item, we have to vote, we have to vote on, all in favor saying five saying aye, against name, motion carried. Except eleven G. Direct, no? Donation request. Donation request will. Eh with the do, so. We have six donation requests that were eh processed by the financing, which was the first one is by provisor, so so I will excuse myself. I I was like also to have make a motion for this specific donation. Eh we do, the municipality of Chandory. Makes a five hundred dollars addition to the values prevention, thank for different, do I have a second, or? I seconded the mo- seconded by Councilor Combi, any question? All in favor saying five by saying aye, against name, motion carried. Will make the comment, because I would not do before the mayor comes back, is that. I'm very happy that we'll be able to solve this and contribute to this organization, is an organization that operates out of the with a very important mandate. We'll continue with the donations request, so the. I would just have a question for. So there's a request, it's with the money, with the budget for twenty twenty-four, so there were. So there was eh that were submitted. For twenty twenty-five, so we would still like like to have a a policy, so. So there's nothing there, like eh. Eh the last one was for twenty twenty-five, so it's. It's it's like in time, but all the other is like eh. It's for the money of twenty twenty-four. So as a chair. Second true, yes, it's in twenty twenty-four, so the last one. There's is no one, so I will have the details on. For twenty twenty-five. I think by the way. With the calculation, what we're doing this evening should be like a thousand dollars if you adopt what's all the donations presented this evening, any other questions or comments? If not, we'll continue like with the requests. So the second one is second recommendations that they define it, they come eh a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollar donation for the Christmas council that will be held eh on December first, twenty twenty-four, and it's for the for the families and the youth of the region, the proceeds will go to them, move by Councilor Bastarache, seconded by and makes a hundred and fifty dollars addition to the Christmas council that will be held on December first for eh for the benefit of the young children, residents of the region, move by eh seconded by Councilor Babinou, ready for the question? All in favor saying five saying aye, against name, motion carried. Eh next one. So the next one. Eh this one, this request comes from eh from three eh young players of the eh the the girl soccer team, the triple A S seventeen. They live in the town of Chandory, but they will be attend like the national championships in October in Nova Scotia, so the eh finance com- Finance committee recommends three hundred dollars donation for each of the three players, I will read the resolution that the town of Chandory. Makes a a hundred dollars donation for each of the three uh players of of the soccer team. Who lives in the town of Chandory and will be attend like the national championship in the in the in the. In October in Nova Scotia. Seconded by councillor Lejeune, ready for the question, all in favor saying five saying aye, against the motion carried. Next one. So the next one is. The the administration finance recommend a two hundred fifty donation for the. I did not get councillor Combié. Is I will make the resolution. That's at least seven, eight players that are that live in the region of Chandory, so is it the one? Even like the the coach. So I moved that the municipality of Chandory makes a two hundred and fifty donation for for this team, move by councillor Combié. Seconded by councillor Richard. Ready for the question, all in favor saying five saying aye, against the motion, Mr. Mayor? Uh Wendy. We can have a question period if not. We'll continue with the next item. So the next one is to give access. To to get like the local. It's a box against Parkinson, so this is the administration finance were to give a free access to the Fama Leja center like. From the for on Mondays and and Wednesday. She was talking too fast, so I did not get the the exact hours, I would take a resolution, question discussion, Mr. Mayor. So I will read that the municipality of Chandory. Accept to give free access to the Fama Leja on like Monday eleven to to noon and and Wednesday like eleven to twelve. And for the bo- boxing against Parkinson, move by councillor Combié, seconded by. Seconded by councillor Richard. Ready for the question, all in favor saying five saying aye, against the motion carried. So the last request. Is the Saint Antoine, they will do like their draw on the February eighth like twenty twenty five, they were asking for free access to committee center. So the the administration committee recommends like the municipality gives access to the center for free. I would take a resolution or discussion. I just saw there's a sheet missing, so you have it electronically, but. I think there's one sheet that was not printed. Will read the resolution. The municipality of Chandory accept to give free access to committee center of Saint Antoine to the Saint Antoine, they can come on February eighth twenty twenty five for for their draw. Move by councillor Richard, seconded by. I will second the motion. Questions on the motion? If not, we'll go to. All in favor saying five saying aye against the motion carried. So we'll continue. Thank you very much, the municipal council, like to support those organization. It's a good gesture, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I just. Would like to bring your attention. On the policy, this is the policy and deletion, the municipality of Chandory and especially also. Point six. Point six two, point two, each group what to be considered by the municipal council for donation was submitted written request at the latest September fifteenth of the current year to be considered for the following year. And we're we're past September fifteen, so I'm I'm making the motion like that the that the date be extended to October fifteen. And that we make an announcement on the Facebook page or website to encourage like the group that want to present their requests can do so. So at this time, we will be able like to get. What could? What would be ongoing for the next year, we give the opportunity to all like to apply for those deletions, so it's an additional month. So I shall move, Mr. Mayor. Move by councillor Babino. Anyone to second this resolution? I second the motion, Mr. Mayor. Seconded by councillor Lejeune, any questions? I think I understand it's for, it's an exception for this year. So it would come back to September fifteen for the next years, right? Yes, I think that's what me. All in favor saying five saying aye against the motion carried. Now we'll go to item. Eleven G. Like the director of the. Recreation Culture and Wellness, so it. So it's been six months since the hiring of the Recreation Culture and Wellness Director. So it's a you had the it's a probation period, so I I did this evaluation and I recommend this permanency. And effective immediately. Councillor Richard, I read the director of Recreation Culture and Wellness. Whereas Joel Gaugat was hired by the municipality of Chandory in February twenty twenty four as a director of Recreation Culture and Wellness. Whereas all full-time employees are subject to a six-month probation period. Whereas a performance evaluation was conducted by the chief administrative officer. And a summary was submitted to the council. Whereas the chief administrative officer recommends. The end of the probationary period and the beginning of the employee's permanent status, it is resolved that Joel Gaugat be appointed permanently to the position of. Director of Recreation Culture and Wellness for the municipality of Chandory. And that the recommendation contained in the report be granted. Move by councillor Richard. Do I have anyone to second the 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 motion? I second the motion, seconded by councillor Combié, any questions or comments? Mr. Mayor, I would just like to bring clarification to the resolution. It's a it's contrary like the employees manual, that's the same like a report. In the article, it to like. I would invite to review like the employees manual. So what I see that we're not necessarily following this. It's a long document, but it's still like the resolution. With the permanent, Joel's a permanent status, any other comments? So we can vote. All in favor of the resolution, saying five saying aye. Mr. Mayor, so when did we? When did we get the email? For the report. It's in your package. The the evolution was done yesterday, you should have received it this morning. We added it in the package. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote, all in favor saying five saying aye, against the motion carried. Congratulations, Joel. We'll go to item twelve, unfinished business. I think we have a long list of that are ongoing and they're not done, I don't know if anything the council would like to add. Can you tell us, Mr. Mayor? For the where is the light installation project at, I will let the eh. The CEO or the director of Public Works, I think we had. I might be able to add and I did not have the chance to the director because he was not there this morning. So uh. It was a conference in Santander, so I had the chance to talk with with someone from MB Power and they were very, they were very surprised like the. Like the request was not finalized, it's one of the supervisors of those who manage. The those requests and said it's not not, it's not normal that it was, it should, it should have been and it was really. Surprised that this file has been ongoing for many months, said it was a lot of lights that for Mickey's mail, Saint Marie and Saint Paul, it was not completed. But he said like, he told me would follow up on this eh and he will do a follow up so that. It things should be moving and we'll see but Jony also discuss with the local representative. Yes. So the last time I talked for people who was in charge of this project. It was taking like a month, month to six week. He said it was start with five twenty five. Uh five five fifteen. I don't know if they started yet, I haven't heard anything. So far. Any other questions? Councillor Mayer. Councillor Bastarache. So I. So I what did we we talk also, they they would change like a light and I was. How do you like your lights? Which lights, we did not get them yet. He was surprised that we did not get them yet, so. So I spoke with him again and. And I and I told him. So that should be done soon. That's what he told me. He he couldn't see that that was wasn't done, thank you. Councillor Mayer. Or I think that surprises me. I have a I got an email from MB Power for July thirty first. And told like they were talking about the road five five fifteen. But they were telling me they they just finished the one for Saint Paul, so. It was a it was a July thirty first, wasn't August, it was like six weeks ago. And. And they had just. They they were done in the sample, they were coming to Saint Marie. I travel and I just went on purpose to. To different areas, corners of work, right, and I didn't see any like except like the 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 Saint Joseph Road that would have been completed, but from phase one. In in the. Like in the portage of Chandory like a. Was phase one and that had was supposed to be done by December fifteen. Would be, we said, well, it would be a nice Christmas gift, wasn't the case, it went to January, February. And then phase, phase two was the remainder and now we are at September seventeen and it's. As it includes Saint Joseph, if. If there are four or five percent of those lights in phase two, that should should have been done. By the month of April. But there's something and. And he was telling me thing like after Saint Paul finished, so. So he got the information, that's what I heard. And it hasn't been done yet. I can't councillor Babino. They want to do it or not, I don't know. Thank you councillor Mayer. And I could still mention. He was like a secretary for the project. So even like sell some post. And last year we. So return like thirteen thousand dollars. We we should we should return probably like a an amount to the reserve fund without it. So it's not beneficial like for the resident of Saint Marie, like they they got, they ask, they're paying for lights, so. So make all our efforts to. To to install those lights, I appreciate like the comments of the CEO and I appreciate also like the comments of the director what what. So that that we're requesting those lights. Councillor Richard. So the rest of the project, is it? Those, is it because they don't have those lights on hand or? So we'll. So what I know like the beginning of the year like it, they didn't have enough inventory and there was a delay because. They were saying that each. Each designer like it's not always the same person like. And some of them like wanted to charge us like extra for. And did not want it, so it was. And it was like for two months and. And it caused a lot of delay like. And as councillor Mayer said like. I was informed that sample was done, but we'll do a follow up on this one. Councillor Mayer and then the CEO, the director. It's more a point on this one. So I submitted a request like to to the administration and to the administration, the human resources committee to look at options. For for the surplus that we'll have like for a year twenty twenty four. Noted, so. It's absolutely noted, so we we discuss it, so my next item is. For the unit of installed, so another file was. To pressure also like for the cell service and I think everyone knows like the cell service. Was reduced even. Can you tell us if some developments were were made? So the commission met with the. Met a few times with. Uh the honorable Dominique Leblanc like for concerning cell service. We are still waiting like for positive things and and I think it's a file that is. I will work really hard on this, but this file. So the two associations are involved. The commission is involved and the municipal council also brought a resolution and I brought it to. To the municipality Union of Brunswick, I think it's also like a political issue, so I ask. Thursday like we're going to Fredericton, so I will ask the question to the three parties that will be attending. The question was asked and the question will be asked. To the person that representing the three parties of. And I can tell you that. We're still, we're still on it and the municipal council, if you want us to continue, well. It was a a big foul. And this foul was impacts a lot of people and the safety of everyone, so the. And things I'm also specifying with everything, everybody I'm talking to. Like everyone who works for governments or there's a thing, something has to be done. And I'm saying my work. We have to find a solution and it's in the hands of. Of of our governments, even the the cell companies, so we have to. If I can tell you one thing, I asked a question. That will ask Thursday afternoon in Fredericton. Mr. Mayor, so during the meeting, March seventeen or March nineteen. We 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 discussed in Fredericton with the Minister Austin. And especially like the Minister Austin expressed like specifically. It was the role of the provincial government to invest in the self-service, but the cell companies did not want to invest. And I wanted to mention it to the Minister Austin to. So for the Minister Austin. And also with the candidates, so. And also with the candidates, so. So these were the intention of eh o- o- of the government like to ensure that eh they take the thing seriously. And I think it's eh mentioned often, like eh with all those eh discussion. And we know there were some eh discussions with the eh public servants at the government during the election period, while it's where also we can see with the question, it'd be more specific, so. So for the government to this file, thank you. Another point. And last year eh we presented a resolution on the creation of a committee for the eh CEO evaluation, we did not do it, so at this point, we'd make the motion eh, the resolution that the council proceed to establish a, a committee comprised of the mayor and two councillors to do the CEO evaluation. So we have a motion, anyone to second? I need someone to second. Counselor Richard. Ready for the question, any other? Anyone eh like a motion that eh that will sit on the eh CEO evaluation, all in favor, sing five, sing aye, against nay. Carried. We'll make a eh a motion to appoint like the, I would ask eh to municipal council to see like who would like to sit on this committee. I was, I was appointed, I didn't have any choice. I would be interested, Counselor Richard and eh Counselor Babino. If you're ready for your questions, all in favor, sing five, sing aye, against nay, motion carried. At this point, I would make a special motion. I'm making a motion to declassify an article an item that we didn't, so the motion, it do declassify other the art- succeed what the meetings where the content eh con- concerning like eh the, the events from eh May thirty-eighth until eh July also for the threat we had to declassify this. The, the resolution eh seconded by Counselor Richard, questions eh or comments on the motion? If not, we can vote. All in fa- favor, sing five, sing aye, against nay. It's been carried. Mister Mayor, one last item. We all know like eh Counselor Maier. I can tell you, Counselor Maier. The privilege I deserve in the world, this is last meeting, Counselor Meade, it did one eh more than twenty-one months, that many of us will do in four years. For the eh like the strategic planning. All I said also like eh he, he roll up his sleeve and eh, and he act as as an advocate like for streetlights, for public safety. And he also like eh look at the schedule, like the training, like he's really like eh an essential part of the public safety. All this file for the eh housing and he had to do, we did not have to do so to see what was missing for the success of this project. He chair like eh the committee development and eh so if eh you have individuals who are working and eh and Counselor Maier worked because he, he wants to do so. And I would like to, to, to eh, to mention like the work of eh my colleague. Thank you very much and, and probably we have some points to identify. And I had the chance also like to work with Counselor Maier on the housing file. He's an individual like eh that did a lot of work on this file. Also the strategic plan, he did a great job on this one, Counselor Maier. It's unfortunate like eh we, we have to say eh eh goodbye, but eh we have to mention like all the work you did, Counselor Maier eh for the municipality of Chandory. So the resignation was eh presented and it will be Counselor Maier is aware and I respect this decision. And I would like to thank from the bottom of my heart and also on behalf of the town of Chandory, thank you. And there are some things eh and I think it saves other councillors would like to talk, who could, who could go on, Counselor Ma- First, I would like to thank the people from Saint-Marie for voting for me in, in November twenty twenty-two. It was really appreciated and I and I would like to mention like the discussion and the collaboration, the openness of the, of the people around the, the council's eh table. And I often say like eh, it's not always easy. There are some files that more difficult than others in discussion. But at the same time, they eh, they have to be done. And I always eh look at we have to go through all of these and eh we are going in things that eh that are eh better. I'm not moving, I will still be living in Chandory. I will not, will never be too far. So the discussion with the council members and the population, like eh the door is always open. I do not want to eh, to elaborate on the reasons why I'm leaving. It was not planned like this at the beginning, but eh but it's known by many. And eh, that, that's it. I always eh want to talk. And if some things if, if you think about it, you have to say it. Maybe eh not everyone will be happy, but at least you will, would have said it. And you're sincere, so. So that, yes eh on September eh thirty-eighth, it's in two weeks. Eh we'll close my eh involvement, my official involvement with eh, with the council. We'll see what eh the future has in store for, for, for us. That's it, but thank you. Thank you very much and I do not want to take more to, I know it's already late, we had a long meeting. I would like to make a mo- a comment at the end to say, well it was eh the last meeting, so. Yes eh. Thank you very much, Maurice. And thanks for eh attending some activities, I were hoping for the municipality of Chandory. And the door will be open. Will continue, but eh will continue, like if there are anything any other unfinished business, if not, we'll go to new business. I think that's what we were, so the next item. Eh question from the public, so we can ask question to explain the process for the public, we cannot eh answer the question. We will answer, but eh so the questions, they're all open, like eh want people to be respectful. Municipal council will take any questions, but if the council wants to answer them, you can, but but if they don't want to eh answer the question, well might not be able to answer your questions, but because our bylaw says that we, we cannot, so we'll answer the question in writing or so we can ask a question, so. A several point. So each one will give their name. Michel Broon Camille Street. The question, so the eh ads on Facebook, we got twenty-four hours that there was be a meeting. And the council the order, is, is there any reason like eh, one is, is such a short period of time? We have circumstances that eh, for a delay, but they cannot give details human resources. We'll try to improve this. Because there's a lot of people like were working could not come, just one thing. Second, secondly. So the last meeting which I mentioned about this, the zoning, because the guy from eh from eh service water could not promise like the, the water could not pass, so that's the reason like you did not accept like, like the zoning. So what changed? So you adopted it today? Yes, I can certainly, the question is eh it's with the resoning process, so the reasoning process as you explained. I'm, I'm answering it. Mister May. Yeah, it's just a point of order, so. I have to explain the point of order to the municipal bylaw. We, we accept questions. Rested, pose a question eh, you can have eh eh develop up more than a short answer. That's probably by eh, why every municipal bylaw? That would do not give any quick answer and I think the resident eh deserves like eh eh the right answer. That's why I'm saying like if you want was said at the last meeting. And at the same time when the consultant tells there was eh, there was eh buildings, I mean two uni- before the zoning. It's still, it's still changing, I know like eh inspectors that we talk about eh and they know like what's in eh they will tell me like eh wh- what's eh being approved or not approved. So we, when I went, stop some zoning, like eh if you say yes if some damages are done, it's your responsibility, it's due diligence, so you, you have to say no. So you voted, nobody said no. Nobody like eh took eh like eh so we're on the citizen's side, you took the, you took Michel Comilla's side, it's not fair. Yeah, you will be, you could be held responsible. And another thing. What happened with the cr- crackout? So the machine they remove. Another question also, we'll document it. Anyone else would like to ask a question? Mister Mayor. I had several comments. From Saint-Marie. I know eh, if they, when they comment, so I would, I would like to take the comments of the deputy mayor and Counselor Maier. I had the chance to work with him, with Counselor Maier on this file for two years. And I know the work he did in Saint-Marie. We're losing an excellent council, not only like eh Saint-Marie, but the town of Chandory. Racheer, Rishaw, Saint-Marie, I just want to say. I see a lot, so the communication with, for the council. And I agree, we're losing like eh eh a super great council in Saint-Marie, it's not normal. Like in the midterm, like eh, like a guy we know, like eh, we know what's been doing for the committee for thirty-five years and we see we, we see like communication problems, like in Bozolay, there's a like, so the transparency like the center, like the, the file for the eh prevention center, twenty-five five. Châtelet-Roue, don't, nobody knows happening, but different, it doesn't seem to be eh normal. I haven't been, attended a meeting for a while, but I see like eh, I don't think I miss a whole lot. But Maurice eh, I think it's unfortunate you're leaving because all the work you did. And it will take like a lot of work from the other councillor to keep eh this on the right track. Eh, thank you very much eh, any other comments or questions? Once again, thank you very much, a public is important. We appreciate, I appreciate and the municipal council also appreciate like your participation. And eh municipal council they, they, they receive your comments and questions. But everything's noted and we'll come back to you with eh and then we'll go to item fifteen, like eh adjournment of the meeting. I'm Danielle Boucher. What she said is true, like eh I know you, you, you're doing your best. And I, often I see like there's no point. This is the first time I see her, like it's named Marc Babino, like to, to put like the eh, I will give him what he deserves, like he's redressing it, but it's important. A thumbs up and the others, like eh you're all doing good, it's not what I'm saying. I noticed like Marc, Marc Babino is eh i- is doing a lot, like to make sure every eh eh I, dots on the I's and T's eh and cross on the T, like the resoning. I understand that we all have an opinion. What's good and what's bad, so what I'm asking to each and every one of eh person like you who will be voting. It's a call for me because it's unfortunate, I have to, to say would you like to have zoning, to have apartments behind your house? The things of eh of us, of, would you like to have apartment buildings at the back of your house? And I understand, like the intent is to bring people. There's a shortage, like for eh housing shortage, I understand this part. Would you want this in your backyard? And I think that's where you should be. You, when you're voting and you should say like if you do not want it. Why would you vote it like for someone else? That's all I want to say. This is my opinion. Thanks for listening to me and thanks for your comments and and it was noted. So now we'll adjourn the meeting, move by Counselor Basarash.